The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Laney, would you go ahead and take the call role for the town board, please?
Yeah, Augustine Alley.
Here.
Well, Lap is here, but she's, oh, not right here right now. McCumber, here. Schmuckle.
Here.
McManus, here. McManus.
Here. John, you want to roll the call?
For the planning commission, Augustine Alley.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Yuli.
Here.
DeGood.
Here.
Racine.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
All right, welcome in, welcome, everybody. We do this, try to do this once a year. It's always good to see familiar faces and looking forward to tonight's information. We start off with item one as public comment. So we have public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. So now's the time, anybody in the public would like to come up and let us know what they have to say. Now's the time to do that. So we will open public comment. Normally the case, I don't see public running for the microphone, so we'll go ahead and close that. And move on to the review and approval of the agenda. So now be the time, if anybody has any conflicts of interest, now be the time to state those. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Support. Motion made, supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess that would carry on both boards. The planning commission, now you have to approve your minutes from your last meeting.
Thank you, Joe. We do have our minutes before us in the packet, but also there were some staff recommended clarifications. I think everybody has a copy of those.
Yes.
So full review very briefly, I think, well, John, why don't you make an explanation?
Yeah, this is in relationship to the Copper Ridge application that you saw at the February 12th meeting. And it's, there's, it starts on page three, but the recommended clarification is on page four. So this was when the motion was made to recommend approval to the township board. And there was reference to the revised list of proposed permitted uses as described in PD report 2025-12. We just wanted to add, suggest adding some clarification to direct on the page three of that report. And specifically that it recommends service establishment business replace both retail low volume and retail medium volume, and that dwelling multiple family be altered by removing, including short-term stays. So we just wanted to make sure that we have that a little bit clarified on that motion.
And my understanding is that was consistent with what was actually on the video record of what was, what was stated?
Correct.
Okay.
So that language is taken out of that PD report. So that's, it's just pointing it so you don't have to go to the PD report. It's actually right here in the motion.
Understood. Okay. Any thoughts or concerns from any of the planning commission members? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as revised.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Fudge, support by Robertson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Chris. So we'll move on to the business to come before the joint boards tonight. And the first item is item A, the Brownfield Housing Tax Increment Financing, a presentation by Ann Jamison. So, Ann, come on up and listen to what you have to say.
Hi, good evening. Nice to see everybody. I'm Ann Jamison. I'm the executive director of the Grand Traverse County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And we've had a, it's been a great year. So it's been an interesting year. So I wanted to come before you. Some of you were still in attendance for our last project that we brought through Garfield Township for the Gothier site that had the 100% affordable workforce housing piece. And so this is just going to give you guys an overview. Really, the intent of today is to give everybody an overview of the program and then give you updates on some of our interim guidelines and policies that the county has adopted over the last year. And then give you as planners and Board of Trustees members, the opportunity, board members, the opportunity to start thinking about Garfield Township's own policies and guidelines that you may want to implement in your community. As you know, the county is here to help facilitate these programs. We rely heavily on our local units of government to implement policies when it comes to your planning, your zoning. We're not getting involved in any of that. And then, so really, this today is really to help kind of give you guys a bigger picture on what's been going on in the state, what's been going on in our county. And I'll begin, so. So the intent of, maybe I will? No, clicker. Which way do I go? Oh, yeah. So.
I can move if it's not.
Okay, which, how do, which one do I press?
There's a little arrow to the right and to the left depending which way.
A little arrow. Oh, okay, thank you. Technical difficulties. Okay. So on July 8th of 2023, so we've had like a full year of implementation of this program. Plus, legislation was introduced to amend the Brownfield Financing Act. The Brownfield Financing Act 381 was adopted in 1996. The intent of that program was to basically level the playing field for properties that were contaminated, blighted, functionally obsolete, historic resources, to be able to look at opportunities to get reimbursed through the increase in the property taxes by the developers doing the investment in the community to basically say, okay, you've got a really contaminated property. Now we need to clean it up. How do we get that done? So that was the beginning of the intent of the act. As it's evolved over time, we've seen implementation of infill in cities, removal of blighted buildings, rehab of functionally obsolete buildings for mixed use. And the biggest push as of late, the last five to 10 years in Michigan, has been a lack of housing. And primarily housing what we term workforce housing. So in Garfield Township, you guys have a lot of units that are termed low-income housing. Your zero to 60% area medium income population, folks that are coming in with low-income housing tax credits and so forth. This program really doesn't, it works with that program, but it's more really intended for the programatics of incomes between 60% and 120% area medium income. So folks in your community, who are your firefighters, your teachers, et cetera, to be able to have the availability of housing for folks who want to, you know, live and work in your community. So basically, this added on another definition of a qualified property, being that we had functional obsolescence, blighted facility. We now have another definition of housing property. So essentially, that includes one or more housing unit proposed to be constructed or rehabilitated. So it can be new construction. It can be a rehab of an existing building, an existing building that's commercial, that may be no longer used for its intended purpose, that can be rehabbed into a multifamily development to provide workforce housing. It can also provide for mixed use. So if you're looking to do a mixed use or a PUD, planned unit development, where you have different uses of different types of housing, so single-family home rental, single-family home for sale, multifamily, like townhomes or apartments, this program fits into that, you know, basically provides a lot of flexibility for all types of uses for housing. So we, the biggest thing is establishing what your community needs are. So each community has to basically have defined support, and usually it's in your master plan or part of your planning approvals where you will designate that housing in your community, you have a specific need. And the type of needs that you're looking at, we are really trying to emphasize that each community integrates what type of housing they need in their community and provide for that incorporation of priority areas in your master plan. And I know that you guys have recently adopted your master plan, and we talked a little bit about priority areas being along corridors where you have existing infrastructure, highest and best use for infill, and so forth. So that's the type of discussions that you as a community and planners on the planning commission are going to want to think about, is incorporation of housing needs and housing absorption. And I'm going to say the absorption is going to be really important to think about for long-term use of this, basically, tool, gap financing tool, because you want to make sure that you're integrating the developer, or having the developers do housing studies that are site-specific to make sure their type of housing product is what your community needs. So the type of housing development activities that are eligible for reimbursement essentially are for rental. Primarily, we've seen rental, and that includes the cost of public infrastructure, necessary safety improvements to the area. So if you need to integrate a crosswalk to access the new development that's, you know, on a really busy street, those types of costs that are being conducted and implemented by the developer can be reimbursed. Also, things like demolition of existing buildings, site preparation is a big one. So you have a site that has, maybe had previous uses on it, or you have a site that has a lot of different grades, and you have to sort of redo the site for engineering purposes, site preparation comes into that. And then existing and proposed infrastructure, so improvements to, you know, infrastructure, whether it's infrastructure that the community enacts, that you see a need for additional infrastructure, whether it's a water main or sewer, you can piggyback as a community on these brownfield plans, leverage the tax revenue that's being generated by that site plan, and remember, it's a site-specific plan. It's not a multi, you know, parcel plan in most cases, like a DDA or an old TIFA. But you can, as a community, require, you know, you can say to the developer, well, we're going to provide you tax incentives. We'd like to also do some improvements to our infrastructure, our trails is another one we've seen in other communities in Grand Traverse County, to be able to leverage dollars to reimburse your public, you know, projects. So we basically look at public-private partnerships for that. The biggest thing we're seeing right now in terms of the highest amount of revenue is related to what we call potential rent loss, and that is really to fill a financing gap. And that's what we did on the Gothier. They had market rate rents. We knew we're at this level, say, we'll call it $1,000. But they were willing to offer the rents at $800. They are losing out on $200 a month. So they get reimbursed for that because they're offering workforce housing, and their property taxes that they generate by building this, reimburse them for that. So qualified rehab is another one that I think is a really great tool. So you may have existing housing stock in your community that really is getting tired. It's looking like it needs a facelift, and there may be investors that are interested in doing a rehab of the existing housing stock that you have. This program allows for that, and it's 100% rehab cost. Now, there's only so much money in a tax, you know, increment financing plan, but it is a big incentive for folks to really think, you know, start thinking about rehabbing existing properties so that you don't have a decline in property values in the surrounding, you know, areas, and you're really rebranding that as, you know, something upcoming and new. Most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the concept of tax increment financing. Essentially, under the Brownfield Financing Act, we're able to capture ad valorem property taxes, specific taxes, and those only come into play when we have certain tax abatements, like neighborhood enterprise zones. And then pilot, the pilot is brand new. Up until 2023, the new adoption, we could never capture pilots, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. The payment in lieu of taxes is usually for low-income housing. But in '23, they also adopted a workforce housing pilot program, which is less of a benefit than the low-income housing tax credit. So legislation thought, well, sometimes maybe we're going to need to be able to leverage even the pilot dollars that are being paid. And so now we're allowed to capture that under the Brownfield Financing Act. Again, it's specific to the project, to the project area that's being redeveloped. It's not the entire community. It's just focused on that one development. So again, with property tax increment financing, we start with what your current base value is. So whatever the property taxes are currently being paid on that property, those are going to be paid in perpetuity until the end of the plan. When the plan is reimbursed, the development has been reimbursed for those eligible costs, the community is still getting those base taxes. You're also still getting your special assessment tax, which in Garfield Township includes police and fire. So those cannot be captured. It also excludes the capture of debt mills. So TCAP has debt, right? Can't touch that. Developers just have to pay back to those taxing jurisdictions. They can't get reimbursed for that. What we can leverage is the small millage that comes in from operating in the township. Library, county, state is our biggest influx of money because Brownfield can leverage the 24 mills, which is inclusive of state operating, school operating, and state education tax. And if anybody gets worried about what that means for the schools, I can explain. So essentially, again, once the Brownfield plan is set in place, that year in which it's adopted, if there's taxes on that property, those taxes are always paid. The increase in taxes that are created by the investment and the renovation and/or new construction are the taxes that are captured to reimburse the developer or Garfield Township for any public infrastructure you may want to look at. Again, going back to, that is basically allowable for up to the maximum of 30 years. In Garfield Township, I think the longest plan we've done is 15 to 20. I think Gothier was 20. So once the eligible costs are reimbursed, that cap lifts, and then all of the revenue, property tax revenue goes back to all the taxing jurisdictions in full. So there's often a huge gain for the community, while providing a benefit from a public perspective for keeping folks living and working in your community, not having to push them out further, at least with the workforce housing piece. We have to look at what we call a reasonableness calculation. And that's where I go through a lot of brain damage in working with the developers and figuring out what is their true gap in their financing. We're not just giving away property taxes. They have to demonstrate that there's a financial need for this incentive. If they cannot demonstrate that they can't get a loan, you know, from a bank without this incentive, they're not getting the incentive. So we go through an analysis that basically looks at what debt service coverage do they need to pay a loan? So for example, I take out a million-dollar loan, but I only have enough income coming in from my rents to cover a very low portion of that debt service. So say, a million-dollar loan every year costs me $200,000 to pay that down over 10 years. So, but I can only get enough rent to cover 150. So I have a huge gap in how am I going to pay back my loan? Because I have to pay my property taxes. I have all my operating expenses, and I have my debt on my loan, right? So the tax revenue comes in as cash into their pro forma that reduces that debt that they owe because they can use that tax revenue to pay down the extra expenses of the loan. So we go through a financial analysis at the county where I work with the developers, look at their pro formas, look at, hey, does this make sense and is there a need? We establish how long is that need? So the Brownfield plans are basically based on when can the project, you know, when does it cash flow properly? Where they don't need this gap financing to come in. So that's the analysis we go through. We work through that. And that's why we're seeing plans that are being approved for 14, 15 to 20 years. It really depends on the need basis. MISTHA requires that. We were a little bit more conservative than MISTHA. So MISTHA says you can come in with 120% or less area medium income and rents. At the county, when we were looking at what market rate rents were, they were like at 120 or 100, you know, 100, because that's what the market can support. So to really create more of a true workforce product, we said to the development community, our control rent is going to be what the market drives. It's not going to be this fictitious number that was put together by folks that we didn't. Most, most of us across the state don't like the control rent that MISTHA put together. It's ridiculous. It's something like 3,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. I mean, you know, that's just, yeah. So anyway, so we're really having, again, every developer say, okay, I really want to see what the market needs and doing that gap financing review. So my, like, when I first started in this world, I'm like, what the heck does area medium income mean? What the heck are rent limits? How do I make sense of this? Because I'm trying to absorb, like, right? Like, really, how much is 80%? How much you making in Grand Traverse County if you're making 80% area medium income? So MISTHA publishes every year, and it increases with inflation and so forth, a countywide area medium income and rent limit target. That is basically published every April, and that basically says every communities, every county's different, right? So Grand Traverse County is going to be different than Lake County or Antrim County. So your numbers are different than their counties. So for example, in Grand Traverse County, 60% area medium income, which is the bottom of the workforce housing spectrum that we're talking about, because remember, it's 60 to 120, that's an income of $41,000 a year, roughly. 100% area medium income, and this is per person. So if you're making 100%, your area medium income average in your county is 69,200. So what can you afford? So MISTHA publishes the rents per person, then there's, it goes all the way up. It goes per person, it goes per bed. So there's different ways of looking at it. But I wanted to kind of use the per-bed analysis per person. So a person earning $41,520 a year, their rent per month would be, they're looking at about 30% of your income going towards rent, would be $1,112 a month, and that includes utilities. So we have to calculate in utility allowances. So it's not just like, okay, the developer can now charge for, you know, the renter. All of these utilities are not responsible for that. No, that has to be baked in the rent. So 60% lower area medium income, about $1,000 a month. At 100%, where you're making, you know, more money, you're making nearly $70,000, they look at, for a one-bedroom, $1,853, which I still think is really high. But that's, you know, basically what the average is. So I hope that kind of helps put it in perspective of what we're talking about when we're talking about area medium incomes and rents. We're not talking like super-low income. We're not, you know. But, you know, ranging between $41,000 a year to $70,000. And these are things that, you know, additional considerations when you're looking at your program. And John has copies of our guidelines, which you guys can take a look at and like what you like. And, but that's really just sort of the premise of programmatically what we thought would work for the county broad enough so that the local governments and, you know, each of our township, city and village is, could, you know, work with. So housing, our biggest thing, my biggest thing, was I did not want this program to be a money grab. You know, I love developers. Yay, great. Thank you for investing in my community. But we're not here to make you rich. We're here to close your financing gap. So we basically do a proportionality adjustment. So for site preparation and infrastructure improvements that typically are 100% reimbursable, we're only allowing those up to the percentage of units that they provide that are workforce housing units. So for example, if you do 50% workforce, 50% market rate, your drives, your infrastructure, your site prep, you're only getting 50% of that back because you're not providing us with a, you know, benefit. Now, that's discretionary, but I think the proportionality makes it more reasonable, and we're going back to that reasonableness, right? The other thing that MISTHA has set aside that's not been utilized, there's just one project that's implemented this, and it's still working through the kinks, is MISTHA does have a set aside of $20 million that developers can apply for to use as part of their gap financing. If the lender would only, they can't get enough loan from a lender, they can go to MISTHA for a supplemental loan. This is just, you know, links to, and I'll forward the PowerPoint to John, links to, you know, the basic programs that MISTHA, you can check on for the housing TIF. It changes daily. I'm not going to lie. So, yep, that's it. So I know that was probably a lot, but essentially, you know, this offers you the opportunity to really look at integrating your master plan with your priority areas in your community and looking at where do your housing needs lie? You know, do you need more single-family homes? And then we look at doing the first single-family home project for sale, which would be really cool, in Garfield Township. Or do you want to do maybe a PUD where you have some single-family homes, some market rate mixed use, some townhome? So there's a lot of flexibility in the program on structuring it. So that's really up to your individual communities to see, you know, sort of where your priorities lie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any other questions, Fred?
I understand that the money that you get to fund these things is basically through the state. I don't know how much, if any, of that is also really coming to the state from the feds, and if that might be affected by what's going on in Washington these days.
This is actually driven by property tax. So the developers are paying for these eligible costs, and they're getting reimbursed through their property taxes. And those are the state, local property taxes. The funding that I talked about at the end is an appropriation. One of the things that MISTHA is definitely worried about is, because HUD, how it works, is HUD being the federal Housing and Urban Development Agency, basically provides funding for the states. MISTHA then allocates funding from the state level to the local level. So there is concern, but we'll not get worried until we see what happens.
Thanks.
Yeah, Molly.
Do you have a maximum, minimum number? We do have a need here for single-family housing. Do you have a maximum or minimum number of units you would have to have in order to be able to qualify?
So that's a great question. So this has been, so they say minimum is one, but we're not using that number because that's just not practical to have a Brownfield plan on one single-family home. So, you know, we're, we're seeing, there's been three projects in Michigan in the last year and a half that have been approved for for sale, and it's been in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, one of them. Another has been in partnership with a land trust because they want to keep the single-family homes affordable. So if you have a land trust or you have Habitat for Humanity. So, if you have a land trust or you have Habitat for Humanity, you can implement controls on the sale cost, that's basically how much you can resale it for. There's legal agreements you can put in place that basically say, if I sell you a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house for two-hundred-and-fifty, you can't immediately sell that property for four-hundred-thousand because that defeats the whole purpose of creating, you know, the single-family home affordability. So, we're all trying to figure out the best approach on it, to be fair. And there's a lot of us who sit on, you know, sort of special collaborative work groups that we have other municipalities that are involved and a bunch of attorneys and practitioners and stay tuned. So, right now, I would say average is ten to fifteen new homes. More typically, we're seeing a big plan unit develop, you know, where you're getting thirty-five to forty new homes and then there may be some multifamily and townhomes integrated. Yeah.
Any else? John, if you have any questions?
Okay, great. I'm always available. You know, reach out if anybody has, you know, questions, happy to help and good luck. Oh, just, I'll give you a quick update and then I'll be done. But just so you guys are aware, we, in the county, over the last year, we have approved three. We have a new one coming through. So, we've had one workforce housing approved in the Traverse, in Traverse City and we're probably not going to see one for a while because we all know what happened there. And then we'll have a new one coming in from, we have a new one coming in from East Bay that got approved, the full board, and then, of course, Garfield Township. The latest one, Acme Township, just approved one last month and that's coming to the Brownfield Authority for approval tomorrow. So, really cool. We're seeing a lot of great work happening in the townships, which is terrific. Yeah.
Are they standalone, the ones that you've done?
Very interestingly, the East Bay Township project is single-family home rentals. Yeah. And they brought in twenty percent of the rentals that were in the workforce housing pocket. Yeah.
Is that the one down by Vanderlip, kind of in that area off, would be north of Hammond?
Believe so. It has a Traverse City address, but it's East Bay.
We all do.
Right. Yeah, that was a...
That's Alan Edwards.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next item on our agenda is the Planning Department Annual Report update. So, Steve or John, which one is going to update us on the annual report?
Thank you. One thing I just wanted to, before I kind of get into the Planning Commission Annual Report, is one of the things that Ann talked about is having a policy in place to deal with these applications that potentially we would have coming in front of the Township Board. So, the case of the Gothier project that the Town Board approved last year is something that it kind of just landed on your laps. I mean, it was, the program was launched, it's, you know, it's right in front of you, it, it sounds good, but that's why we wanted Ann to come in and give you an opportunity at least here, maybe again, or at least to kind of give a little bit broader context of these particular projects because we could see this, more applications potentially coming in front of the Township Board. And we wanted to make sure that when we do so, that we're kind of driving what we want to see in the Township and what maybe not is important. Because otherwise, you're going to be constantly reacting to these applications and it's going to be really hard to say no or, you know, maybe, or whatever it is that you're concerned about a project. It's better to go and put some policy in place and then let the developers know what you're willing to entertain or at least to consider. So, we did, and these are just some thoughts, but kind of going to this back slide, is just some ideas. We did have a little bit of a conversation with the Planning Commission at its January Study Session. One of the things that Ann mentioned, that there probably needs some type of a study that identifies income and housing needs within the township that will generally support the projects. It'll also determine, have a better sense of what's, even when people talk about housing and it's a need in our community, to what extent is it in Garfield Township? There have been some studies out there, but they're usually like at the county level or they may be a municipality that's not Garfield. It would be helpful to have that study done strictly for Garfield so we can get a sense of what is the demand for the types of units. That way, if a developer comes in and they're saying, yeah, we can provide, you know, X number of units at, you know, a hundred percent AMI or whatever, we can say, maybe we need that, maybe we don't. That study would give us the better sense of it so we can see if it's something we want in our community or not. There are some priorities. I think the Board has mentioned several times that there's a need for starter homes. That's a tricky one, as Ann was mentioning. Most of it's been, tends to be rental situations. The problem you have with the starter homes or any type of ownership is how do you ensure that it's not flipped and somebody just takes that, turns it around and sells it? That's where there has to be some type of entity, like she mentioned, like Habitat or somebody else, to ensure that that doesn't happen. Certainly identifying areas geographically within the township where we'd be more supportive of some of these, areas where there's water sewer, areas that are identified in the master plan, we have several areas that are identified as mixed-use and there could also be areas of higher-density residential. One thing she didn't mention, but I know this is a facet of these, is the state calls it a look-back. So, these can be actually projects that may have already started that you could reimburse. So, that's one thing we want to say do, would that be something that we would be entertaining or not? Also, there are ways to ensure that maybe you want to, while the range can go, I think Ann says the county's kind of limiting it to a hundred percent AMI, you may also have some criteria in there where maybe you always want to guarantee that, let's say, it's always at least twenty percent of those are going to be eighty percent of AMI or even less. And that just ensures that there's, they're not coming in at the high end all the time. She mentioned public infrastructure. Those are costs that could be included in the plan and should help to reimburse the township for the improvement of those. And again, it, it wouldn't be happening without the actual project happening. So, if it's, it's not the initial investment made by the developer, the project doesn't exist and the additional increase in the taxes is not, is not captured. One of the things that we wanted to make sure, when the Gothier project came in front of the Township Board, or at least was, came to the Township last year, is we wanted to make sure that there was, the planning and zoning part was approved. We didn't want a situation where if they came in front of the Township Board, that, let's say the Township Board approves it and then they go through the planning and zoning process and we find, well, jeez, the zoning doesn't match up and all of a sudden there's conflicts and whether they can get zoning approval. So, we did at least, I believe it was April last year, come in front, they'd have the developer come in front of the Planning Commission to at least get conceptual review for the Gothier site. They have since submitted an application for the special use permit this month, but we wanted to make sure that at least there was some review done by the Planning Commission to say that that's a valid project. May not have all the details ironed out, but generally that should be a use that would be permitted in, in that area. So, these are some of the ideas. There could be some additional ones to develop a policy. I think having priorities and what's important to the township. So, for instance, if starter homes are a priority, that could be listed to say, look, if you're, if you're coming in as for a rental situation, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it, but if you have a proposal for starter homes, that could rise to the top and that could be a priority. So, this, I think, is something that if the Board has in place, is something that can help to weigh applications. As Ann mentioned, we're probably getting more of these types of applications. It seems to be still new, but is certainly on the radar screens for a lot of developers in the area. Any questions or comments?
Do we have a policy now at all?
No, we do not. So, these are just some ideas and we thought we would craft something and then, you know, draft it in some form. I don't know.
Are you suggesting that the staff would do that? You guys would do work on that?
We could do that, but it might be helpful to, I don't know if you, you know, we can set up a committee or however you want to do that. Any thoughts? You know, we can kind of go forward with at least drafting some key pieces and then we'll probably boil it down to some actual policy language that you can, that the Town Board can consider.
I mean, I was just at least working, you and Chris initially, to come up with a basic idea and an idea, a committee, who we may want to sit on that committee and, you know, going on it, I think.
Okay. Yeah, as Ann mentioned, there is a county policy already in place. It's going to be a little, it's going to be different. It's whatever their priorities are and some of the kind of standards that they're using to evaluate projects and what's important. This would be, you know, kind of work in tandem with that, but certainly be what the Township's priorities are, what's important to us.
When it comes to starting points and, you know, steel shamelessly, I always say, when you can use somebody else's ideas to start our own, it's not a bad way to go. If there's a policy out there we can use as a starting point, I'd use that.
John, do you know, on that other screen, when she was talking about the AMI and what a person could afford of the eighteen hundred dollars approximately at the hundred percent of AMI? Would that also count toward a mortgage? Because if you're thinking of a starter home that someone's buying, and that's like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house approximately for eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so that, so that's strictly rental. So, that's a good question. I'm not sure how the whole mortgage issue or the, or the home issue would work.
Should have asked her, but she left.
But, yeah, that, I think it's, I would like to push the issue because I think if this, if any, if we do want to get, if we want to incentivize starter, starter homes in Garfield Township, this is probably our best tool to use. And it's not going to necessarily be easy, but I, I think it's the one that gives, has the most promise and certainly is worth looking at, at least.
What is the, is there a cost to the Township for it? Do we lose those taxes at the Township level for those twenty years? I mean, just understand that.
No, the, the base amount, the taxes currently being paid will always continuously be paid.
It's just the increased tax.
It's the increased value. So, if, in the case of the Gothier, now that they put, once they put apartment buildings on that site, there's now that increased value of that property. That's the part that's captured and it's a reimbursable situation. So, they have to request it, it actually is approval process to get reimbursed by the County Brownfield Authority that they'll have to do. And once their term of that plan is done, then it, all of that value comes on the tax rolls and is no longer captured.
And she mentioned infrastructure. So, if we had to do infrastructure upgrades, do we get that money back initially? Do we have to wait for that as well?
So, that would have, that would be the same thing. It would be a reimbursable situation where there's the cost upfront, but we would have to, to recover that from the revenue that's captured, from the value.
On that same thing, as a municipality, Ann, if we wanted to put in water and sewer or something and we wanted to fund that, would we be able to be reimbursed or does it have to be a developer who's going to do the end project?
I believe it would be, the Township would be reimbursed because it would be, I guess it depends if it's on-site or going to the site. And I'm assuming it would be, it could potentially be a combination of it, but I've assumed it would be, be the Township. I think it's, the one of the things that's really important is in tax increment financing is the state contribution, which she mentioned, like the twenty-four mils with the operating. The state makes the schools whole, so the schools aren't, don't lose out on that. But that's a huge piece. This is a brownfield program that's not like, for instance, there was the brownfield plan for the Kmart building. Now, and that, that was, that was purely local taxes captured for that. This one allow, and the reason being is the Township is not considered a core community by the state of Michigan. So, there are limitations on how it can be applied. I think that in that one, maybe there was some state participation because it was some of the contamination, but there are other uses of the brownfield that we don't get the state participation from. This one, we do get the state participation, which is a huge amount of the tax increment that's captured to help the project go forward. So, having that state participation is, is critical. To rely on local alone is not as, it's still good, but it's not as valuable as having that state participation.
Just one more. So, the developer comes to the Planning Commission first, comes to you first, or goes to the brownfield and, and they say, yeah, it sounds like a good idea. Who, how do they, how would they go?
Typically, we start with them at the county first. If, like, if somebody is interested, I think they would, they would, the county would have some discussions with the Township Manager and, you know, does this project, is this viable, is this something to pursue? They certainly have their thresholds on what constitutes a viable application at the county level. So, that would have to be considered first before they go through that process as, in terms of like an intake point.
Sure.
Works. Is it on? Yeah. A comment and a question. So, the comment is, I would like to see if we're looking at starter homes, if there is any way to look at options for down payment assistance, because if you have somebody looking to get into a starter home that is at a hundred percent or below of AMI, it may perhaps be difficult for them to have built up a nest egg to get into a home with a twenty percent down payment to begin with. So, my comment is whether staff can look and see if there are any programs to support that side of it. And then my question is, in the case of a starter home, so the, the person or family purchasing the home is in that range that we're looking at, is the, does their mortgage, so typically like for my mortgage, I pay my property taxes into escrow. So, is that the pause in the property tax reaching its full value reflected in the person's mortgage or how does that functionally work? Does that make sense?
So, it, the one thing that it'll do is basically, it's, from my understanding, it would work similar to a conventional situation. The only difference here is that the price has been dropped down. So, you're, you're buying a, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, let's say. But everything associated with that would be typical of the, a conventional mortgage and, you know, application and financing of that home.
So, in that case, their SEV, when they purchase the home, similar to any other purchase home, the following year is at that fifty percent of the purchase price and then the property taxes reflect that?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, one of the things that I think is important, and I know, like in the case of Habitat, when this is, or like a land trust, is they have some part ownership of that. So, that ensures that should that homeowner sell that property, that they're party to it, Habitat or the land trust, to ensure that the next, the purchaser of that meets the qualifications for it in terms of, of income and so forth. So, that's how, that, why that third party is essential to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, John?
John, I know Ann mentioned that in trying to do some of these starter home projects that in order to prevent somebody from just flipping the plank, the thing, you probably had to have to have a developer like a Habitat or a land trust that's involved that can put restrictions in. And I'm aware that, I think there's a fellow named Moby that's involved with a land trust, but I think that's only in Lillimaw County. Are you aware, are there any such land trusts in existence yet in our area?
Not, not that I'm aware. I know Homestretch did something like a land trust on a couple of projects. I know, I think it was one they did at Midtown where some of those units that are not on the river were part of that. I know they did that a while back, but I don't, they're not necessarily considered a land trust.
So, can you think of who we could use as a developer to sort of partner with on doing any of this or we? I think a lot of us like the idea of trying to get some of this housing going, but there's got to be an entity with whom we deal.
At this time, I don't, I'm not aware of it. So, I'm, that's, that's part of figuring out that puzzle, but so, you know, and then Habitat, it could potentially, but the Habitat has their requirements and so forth, so I'm not sure if that's, if that's necessarily always a viable opportunity. I think ideally, it would be a situation where it would probably be a mix. So, you would have the developer and... has their requirements and so forth. So I'm not sure if that's, if that's necessarily always a viable opportunity. Um, I think ideally it would be a situation where it would probably be a mix. So you would have the developer and let's say they're, they're developing a housing development and say a portion of those would be ones that are considered, uh, part of these, at these, at this cost point where it would fit for a starter home situation. But, no, I'm not, that's one of the things, I think if there are other communities in Grand Traverse County that have the similar priority, then maybe there's something like that could make it viable to have some type of entity created. Or perhaps maybe it doesn't have to be locally. There are land trusts throughout other parts of Michigan, so maybe they could expand into this market.
Maybe that Yarrow Brown from the housing group locally would be a source of information about that, too.
Perhaps, yeah.
Thanks.
Well, I, I was just, you know, start working on and, uh, you know, start, you know, Chris can update the board on progress and we can get something in place. If you need some help or wants volunteers, obviously reach out, anybody that wants to volunteer to help with that. But I'd say a policy in place.
Um, just, so this next part of the meeting, I think is just an opportunity, I'm just kind of putting some slides here to facilitate some conversation. But I think, I know in talking with the planning commission and just observations, uh, of what transpires during this, these joint meetings and in the follow-up is, I think it helps to, for the planning to commission to kind of hear some of the priorities of the township board and to kind of carry those forward through, whether it's through zoning changes or master plan, uh, priorities and that type of thing. So, uh, did want to just kind of start highlighting twenty twenty-four, um, and some of the things that happened. You did receive an, uh, annual report, uh, from the planning commission at your meeting earlier this month. Um, kind of, a couple of bullet points just to highlight out of that. One of the, the big projects was completing the master plan, which the township board adopted and approved, uh, back in July. Uh, in terms of some of the types of development that we're seeing, in the, uh, in the township, we're seeing a lot of service businesses. The housing that we are seeing in terms of applications and expect to continue to see applications for tend to be multifamily or senior housing. Um, and then other types of commercial properties tend to be pretty small scale stuff. Um, we're going to see, we anticipate to see some more drive-through types of uses. Um, but those are typically on smaller scaled development. Um, the retail that we're getting is, tends to be more discount retails, uh, outlets. Um, that could all change, but, uh, this, you know, if we look back at this last year and some of the prior years, that's some of the, uh, in terms of development activity that we're getting. Uh, one of the things we started, uh, last year or two is to, is tracking our activity a little bit more. Uh, the, in terms of applications that were either reviewed by the planning commission and town board or by staff as terms of administrative reviews was thirty-one. And then we also are now tracking the fees that we've collected, at least through the planning department for those applications. And that was at fourteen thousand seven hundred. So at least we can do those and see what the kind of level of activity helps us to see, you know, are things progressing or, um, in, in what fashion? In terms of some of the next steps, I know that we'll be talking with, in the planning commission, uh, in the master plan talked, I mentioned about some mixed-use district areas. We want to look at the, um, zoning ordinance and to kind of create some mixed-use zoning districts. We have one that's, uh, used in a few places. It's the planned shopping center district. That essentially functions like a mixed-use district. Um, it's, right now, it's in case of Cherryland, we're kind of using that process as we go through that in the redevelopment of Cherryland. It's kind of learning how it's, you know, we're using the planned shopping center district, but we want to be, you know, learning what could be done better in terms of the way the list, the uses are listed, the process and so forth. Uh, it's not ideal, the planned shopping center district is not ideal for a mixed-use district. There's some limitations to it. And, uh, I think as we go through that, um, we'll be, uh, kind of learning from that and maybe, and how we would actually develop a new mixed-use district. And there will probably be a couple of different ones. One for larger scale development, one for smaller scale development, and one for corridors. One of the things that was really an important step last year is we finally got an updated comprehensive development plan for Cherryland Center. That kind of is a roadmap that we're using to further the redevelopment of Cherryland. It's kind of difficult out there when we have a lot of different owners, different developments going on. Um, another project that is, and I know you've, you've had some discussions related to the Olson Foundation parcel up there on thirty-one and, and Rennie School Road. We know that they're continuing to want to develop that in terms of new development into the more of the interior of the property. So that's, uh, an area that was previously designated all commercial and it's now designated in the master plan as mixed-use. So it does allow some flexibility, uh, as they go to develop that property. But, uh, we will, that process, um, and how we go forward with that will require, uh, an understanding of, of what that's going to mean in terms of changing the zoning on that area and insert, and ensure that we have some type of overall plan for that, um, development. Because one of the things we're looking to is to see if maybe there are other alternatives from plan unit developments. Planning unit developments, I think, have been used very well in the township, has gotten a lot of benefits, community benefits such as parkland and so forth. But from a legacy standpoint, they're kind of a nightmare to manage. Um, it's, it adds another layer to the zoning ordinance in terms of ensuring the records that are kept for those PUDs are kept around forever because they're essentially like customized zoning ordinances for that site. So in the case of the Olson Foundation, yes, they could come in and do a PUD, but we think there might be a way to do it in more conventional form in terms of doing a plan, but do the zoning, the land divisions and so forth that don't necessarily require a PUD. Um, it doesn't necessarily have the flexibility, but we think for that property could work. Also, the, uh, I, I know Chris has mentioned to you about the capital improvement plan, um, and, and that's something I think the planning commission, uh, would be interested to see how that relates to some of the developments in, uh, mixed-use areas that are planned within the master plan. I don't know if anybody on the planning commission wanted to mention anything about highlights of last year or anything.
We got a new member on the board this year.
Yeah.
Got rid of an old one.
Um, the other thing we just wanted to mention, um, is I think because of the tracking some of the activity, the development activity in, in the township is, I think we're in a very good spot in terms, we're fortunate that even though we've had some vacancies of properties, there's been other businesses that have come in there or other uses that have transformed areas. So, you know, we're, we're seeing Cherryland, uh, still change over. I know that with the big lots that's closing there, that's going to open up another space. We anticipate that that space will be filled, uh, with interest in there. Uh, so there, we're fortunately to have that, you know, we're, in some communities, that could happen, that a, a space like that could sit for years. So we're fortunate, but we're trying to also anticipate changes in the developments that we're seeing, particularly for some of these major, uh, iconic locations within the township. Um, and so some of that we're seeing what's happening in other communities. We're not the only community with a couple malls. There are, uh, communities throughout the state, throughout the country that have malls that are transforming. The, particularly in, we have going for us is that the land is really valuable in these locations. I would say even more so, let's say, in the Grand Traverse Mall than it is the Cherryland Center. And we anticipate that there will be some changes to the Grand Traverse Mall, uh, going forward, but we want to, uh, be a part of that hopefully transformation into, uh, new uses that are on the site as well as, uh, new retailers and so forth. Some of the, uh, I want to kind of review some ideas that are happening around the state. Yeah, Briarwood Mall, which is in Ann Arbor, um, it's a mall that's, it's quite a bit larger, uh, than the Grand Traverse Mall. The Grand Traverse Mall would be considered kind of a small mall in, uh, standards compared to the downstate, but nonetheless, very similar. Um, in, in this case, they have a few anchors, there's four anchors. One of them was a Sears. They're looking at the one end of it. So the end that's kind of the, in the blue, or excuse me, the purple and the, and the, uh, pink areas, that's where the, the, uh, Sears formerly was located. And so they've amended that plan for that site, uh, to basically change it over into, um, a mixed-use development that will include some new retail. So they'll be able to put in, uh, buildings that accommodate some of the needs for some of the new retailers. And then they're also including some, uh, multifamily. So this was a part where they took a portion of the mall and that they inserted some mixed uses, including the residential portion of it. So when you look at that, uh, rendering there, the one on the right side, the perspective, it's that building on the left side there is the, um, apartments that are planned. The building's kind of towards the rear there, that's where the old Sears is located. So it's allowing for, uh, they're not necessarily attached to the mall, but they are in close proximity to allow for those, uh, those, uh, retail outlets to have, you know, increased customers with the residents that are located in that area. Um, another one, this is a much larger mall, is the Northland Mall, uh, that was basically, it's one of the, uh, first enclosed malls in the state of Michigan. And that one was in a situation where it was a complete redevelopment. So that was a, where they actually raised the property. I know this is in the city of Southfield. Um, they were, the city was heavily involved in this, but that's where they, in that particular case, they completely came up with a new plan that has a mix of uses. You know, a lot of residential, still has commercial components, uh, entertainment uses and so forth. But that's, you know, something that's happening right now in, in terms of, is under construction. Did want to also talk about, um, Logan's Landing. So we do know that there's been interest, uh, in Logan's Landing. We have a new property owner on the west side of Logan's Landing. Um, we do see there, there could be some opportunity for redevelopment there. This is in, in Mishawaka, down in Indiana. This would, we've seen a lot of, we were kind of doing some research and looking at a lot of, uh, river, uh, development. Not saying this is what is planned, but this is, uh, one example of what could be done on a site like that potentially, if somebody is looking for development. One of the things that, um, we thought in the case of Logan's Landing, it's got, it doesn't meet our zoning requirement. So a lot, what's there right now is non-conforming. In other words, you couldn't build that form today. If we were to, if the township were to allow for something that kind of replicates that, obviously modern, you know, the, the old buildings go away and something new happens, it would, it would be best served to go through the plan unit development process, which affords flexibility. Now, it's not a very big site. I think it's important to understand that those are very small parcels down there. So the, the scale of what could potentially be there would be very limited. Um, but it could be something where you could maybe incorporate some other uses than commercial. The challenge with commercial on that site is to meet, you know, more of our typical standards in terms of parking requirements and so forth. I think you could have some amount of commercial, but it would have to be at a small scale. Um, there is, uh, opportunities certainly for residential, uh, improving the, the waterfront there, certainly with the Boardman Lake Loop Trail gives the opportunity for uses that are there that are tied to that, uh, trail. The other part, uh, that we could, that the township could consider in working with any developer is the Medallie Park there that's owned and operated by the county. That could be something that could work and coincide with that particular development. Um, in terms of ensuring that there's some public value to, through the whole process. Because in terms of the plan unit development, there has to be some of that public benefit. So there, this might be a tool that could be applied at this particular location. So I just wanted to highlight those because these are some of the area, these are, uh, some of the sites where we do anticipate, certainly with the Logan's Landing is going to be one that the township's going to have to, we're going to get some proposal from a developer at some point here. We need to figure out, you know, what best suits that area. And certainly we want to make sure that there's environmental protections are sure there. The zoning ordinance that the township has at this point is, uh, very, uh, it, you know, it has different environmental protections there, probably more so than a lot of townships in our area. And certainly we want to adhere to that, but at the same time allowing for something that's viable for the redevelopment of that site. Um, so that's something we just want to kind of put on the radar screen that, uh, to be aware and kind of work with on these, uh, whether it's Logan's Landing or the Grand Traverse Mall or Cherryland Center going forward.
You know, you mentioned Riverwalkers. I can think of several places around the state and country I've been to that feature Riverwalks, you know, and they aren't, don't necessarily have to be big. Uh, one comes to mind, uh, years ago, we repeatedly have meetings in, in Gladwin. Gladwin has a Riverwalk. It's a small, postage stamp size, but it's a little mixed. It's got a little small hotel, restaurant, shops, and it probably doesn't occupy much more than the west side of Logan's Landing. So I think if people creative, there could be some opportunities there. I know housing, I'm not sure what would fit there. What does the zoning allow there now?
Uh, right now, it's general commercial. So technically you could put a car wash in there. So that's why we want to, uh, I mean, not to say that that would be accepted, but that's, that's why we want to, we've changed the, the future land use designation as mixed use to ensure that we want to avoid that, uh, type of situation.
Right, right.
So, but that's where I think the PUD, we've kind of, as we had inquiries on that property, we've basically, our message back to those inquiries is that if somebody owns both sides of Logan's Landing, has, has total control, that, then the township could at least consider doing a PUD on that site. Uh, that way we ensure that it's done right way appropriately for that location. But there is a, a findings that has to be done first. Uh, the township does have to determine, because our, our minimum size for a PUD is twenty acres. And I think collectively, on both sides of that, you're probably only talk, talking about five acres of land there. So that, but the ordinance allows for it to go to a smaller amount if there's public benefit. And I think obviously there would be, if there would be, uh, some uses there and some, a design that works for the community. Also, it would take, uh, basically a facility that's run its eight, its, its course and it's, it's time for new investment in that area.
John, you said on the other side, um, is part of the county. Who else, is there another owner on the buildings on that side too then?
Not at this, the east side is listed for sale.
Okay.
Um, there is a new, uh, owner of, uh, the west side, and then the east side is, is up for sale. And I believe that owner is interested in at least, uh, acquiring that, the east side so that they collectively have both sides.
Oh, okay.
Is it one owner on the west and one owner on the, is it just two parcels of property?
Primarily. There are other parcels down there. There's, uh, some offices that are down there that have easements to get through to. So when we talk Logan's Landing, we're just talking about the buildings on each side of the river that are kind of like the one-story older ones. But there are some offices back in there, too.
To the, back to the west and down at the base of the hill. I understand that, but I mean, the two sides of the rivers, it's just two pieces of property there. There's not multiple owners in there.
Right. Two parcels. And there's also floodplain issues there as well. I mean, that's, you know, I, I know one of the things we've talked about is it could just be potentially all parkland, too. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be a bad use there, but that's where we're at right now.
I like that. Let's put that down there.
That was one I thought we could be a, a, a scale. Not all of that, but certainly the frontage, you know, you could go some height, you know, some, some types of uses there that would fit in with the trail.
Is that soil stable? I mean, it's...
I would think it probably isn't. I know just from the standpoint of the issues on the south side there with the YMCA property, I would say that would probably be similar. I believe on the east side of Logan's Landing there, where the jewelry store is there, the building itself is out of the floodplain, but everything else there, the parking lot is within the floodplain. So it's, that would, to me, would be an indicator that there's, soil issues could be...
I wonder how much of it's fill.
I'm sure there's some fill down there, definitely. Otherwise, those buildings probably weren't going to be built. So, so we just want to kind of leave you with some of these ideas of what's happening around in other areas and know that we have some options here as we kind of look at these, uh, sites, which are pretty high. here as we kind of look at these sites, which are pretty high-profile for the community.
Yeah, Molly.
Maybe just a couple of more minutes on, little discussion on the Grand Traverse Mall and what's happening there. And we've got somebody moving into TJ Maxx area. And any other discussion that you've had about that? We, you know, we're seeing this, what's happened at the Cherryland and how that's transitioned. Is that likely to be the transitioning for the Grand Traverse Mall? And, you know, how are we dealing with that?
From what we've seen with the Grand Traverse Mall, it's, it's different than, than Cherryland. I mean, Target there just completely redid the store a few years ago, so they've obviously have a commitment. There's JCPenney that's still there, Dunham's, and then we know that Macy's will switch over to something else as, as they, at some point here, close down. But the value, I think, is a lot different. Just in, you know, I always kind of look at the Township as kind of two halves, east half, west half. And we just know that the value of 31 in that South Airport area is probably some of the highest-valued commercial property in northern Michigan. It's got great visibility. It's got some prominent retailers in there. So we don't see it happening the same way that Cherryland. Could we have some changeover in some of the retail there? Absolutely. And we'll probably see more of that. But at the same time, it, I think the value of that property and, and the ability to change over, whether it's, you know, just new retail or to other types of uses can happen, I think, more, I think, in an ideal manner than, than what happened at Cherryland. I don't think we would see the...
But it's set for fifteen, twenty years.
The long vacancies, right. Yeah. I, I think there would be, if there would be a change in ownership perhaps, or anything of that nature. I think it wouldn't, if, if you recall, Cherryland went to auction and so forth, at least for a portion of it. And that kind of created a, a kind of a lag there in terms of what was done. And, and we're still, you know, working through that. But I don't think that would happen, I don't think it would get to that extent necessarily at the Grand Traverse Mall. We do have separate owners there, so there is Brookfield owns the majority of the mall. But when you look at the anchors, Target is owned. They have their own property. Same thing with JCPenney, the building and their own property. And then Macy's has their building and property, which is, you know, those parcels are roughly seven to eight acres in size, generally. So they're sizable. But then the rest of that, which is a much larger site than Cherryland, is all Brookfield.
And how about the connection coming from Lowes? Any progress on that? Maybe some of the board members don't know about that. There's been discussion about coming up with the connection across the back from where you drive up into Lowes and coming across to the mall behind that hotel that's there.
Yeah, so Lowes is committed. They have to put their portion in. I know the operation manager at Chick-fil-A there is really interested in connecting. The part we haven't really had good commitment from is from Brookfield on the mall part. Although recently, we've got, we had a couple meetings with management people from Brookfield, so that may open with the Ollies application. So that may open up the door for us to revisit that. It's always been hard, if, dealing with the local managers is never, usually gets things moving. We always have to get into more of the corporate connections. And so maybe that could open it up, because it could drive a lot more customers through the backend there. Plus, they also own some property there that they could dispose of and potentially could be for other development. So we see maybe with these new connections with Brookfield, maybe we can revisit that conversation.
Well, just for safety concerns about getting out onto 31, you've got a light at Lowes. You got a couple of lights at, you got a light at the mall, you know, you've got...
On to Molly's point. When that hotel behind Chick-fil-A becomes operational, it's really going to be a mess. I don't think it's open yet. I don't think, but...
I don't think it's not. Getting there.
If you think traffic was bad with Chick-fil-A, wait till the hotel opens up, you know, so...
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't, I'd like, for one, not to lose sight of that. Whatever we can do, whatever I can do to help facilitate that and start conversations, it's, would definitely be something we want to keep, keep looking at.
Yeah, we, we worked with Gordy Fraser on that. We had some concepts done for that. One of the challenges we have there a little bit is, is the cell phone tower there that's owned by the Township. It's kind of smack dab right in the middle. But we think there's a way that we could route it around. When Chick-fil-A and the hotel went in, they, we had them dedicate an easement going the back end north to south, so that if it had to come over onto their property, it should be available to that, to do that.
Everybody's in a roundabout. It's put a roundabout with the cell tower.
It might work.
Right into the area. But at any rate, no goodness. Yeah, I don't, I would like to not lose sight of that if we can. And I got a little more time on my hands now, so I could help maybe do some of that as well, so. But any other, any topics anybody'd like to, to bring up? I mean, I was thinking back of the last few meetings we've had and joint meetings, and it's been housing, housing, housing. Probably for the last three times we've gotten together, we've thrown out terms like low income affordable, and now the newest catchphrase is workforce, you know. And, you know, I, Chris sent me an analysis that was done. I think you probably worked with him or did it, in, in really the Township analysis of, of our housing mix compared to the other municipalities in the region. And we're, we're really high on, on rental. And, and, you know, we've certainly done our part, but the single-family home is still the, the niche that people are looking for. And, you know, I was, Cara mentioned trying to help somebody get a down payment on a house. I don't know how you save for a down payment on a house when you pay $1,800 a month in rent for an apartment. I'm not quite sure how you, you make, I never had a mortgage that was $1,800 a month, let alone rent on a, on a one or two-bedroom apartment. So I don't know the answer there, but I, I think we, you know, and obviously, it was on the Planning Commission until November. So, you know, we, we changed the zoning ordinance. We reduced the maximum, the minimum, the lot sizes in a lot of the districts. And we've done things to try to enhance that single-family home building. It, that maybe hasn't translated yet, but I, I described it, people that ask about it, it's like a doom loop. You know, you, you, people, you know, we could blame everything on COVID, but, you know, that it really exacerbated when COVID hit. People realized they can work from, work from home. Well, where do they want to work from home from? They didn't want to stay in Chicago and Detroit. They wanted to work from home and move to Traverse City to do that. So the influx, the demand for housing is no surprise to anybody. You know, because the builders are building apartment buildings, you know, because that's what, they can fill up quickly. And so they aren't building single-family homes because they can make more money renting, renting apartments. So we just got to keep on that. So, you know, it's just kind of historic. I just, you know, I think, I think our, our mission is probably still the same. But anyway, I'll just throw it out to the board. Anybody have any comments or ideas or questions for John and staff?
I'll give you an example. I just got a call from my granddaughter today, and she's working from home in Salt Lake City, Utah, and moving back to Traverse City for the summers to work from home and renting. So like you said, when they can work from home, you can do it anyplace.
Is there anything else you wanted to go over to, John?
Okay.
Anybody, any comments? I, I would like to, you know, obviously thank all the commissioners for your continued work on the board and accepting your positions if they came up this year and welcome Cara to the board. It was an easy, easy state to fill, so we can, you know, she didn't have, there was not anything, you know, so. But we really did have a, a great board here. I, you know, I spent a lot of years with these guys and, and gals, and it's just, we have a really dedicated Planning Commission. And I've seen other commissions, other committees and things that don't have the, the knowledge and the commitment that these, these folks do. So I'd just officially and publicly like to thank you guys for your service.
Absolutely. We're very fortunate. Thank you. And you, too, John. We're very fortunate to have you.
Oh, yeah. Our staff is.
And Steve. Put the blame on him.
Well, that's the, all the topics that everybody wanted to talk about tonight. I guess we're on to our second and final public comment. Jennifer's our only public tonight. I don't know if Jennifer will make any comments tonight. She's just here to...
She talked enough last night.
Yeah, so, so I will open and close public comments since I don't see any public here. And then if there's no, no objections, we will stand adjourned, so.